All right, everybody ready?
Yes.
Good afternoon, welcome to the September 19th Spokane City Council briefing session. Councilmember Bingle is appearing remotely, so if he's waving his hand at us, remind us to call on him. Councilmember Wilkerson is probably going to be absent until near the end, but Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Wilkerson is absent.
All right, Administrator Perkins.
Thank you, Council President Biggs, members of the City Council. This is the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, September 26. Number one, on the consent agenda, it's a five-year value blanket order for liquid chlorine for the Water Department. Estimated annual expenditure is $150,000. Our presenter is Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, Council. Item number one is a five-year renewal for a value blanket with OXARC for the purchase of chlorine gas for disinfecting the water system. That's with a maximum annual spend of $150,000 per year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. Item two on the consent agenda, public works agreement between the city of Spokane and Y O Y doing business as verdis out of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho for removal and placement of the Garden Park Reservoir Pump House. Presenter is Dave Steele.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This is Facilities Department working with the Water Department. The Garden Park Reservoir is up on 37th Avenue. Currently, the reservoir has a small pump house. That pump house has a timber structure roof on it. It's been there much, much too long, and it leaks way, way too much. And so, working in conjunction with Water Department, we've had contractors come out, bid it, we're going to replace, we're going to remove the wooden structure, replace it with steel, steel deck, and then a membrane roof. We're also going to provide for a new hatch to allow them better access to the existing pump equipment in there. So hopefully, we can get this thing buttoned up this fall. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Item three on the consent agenda, is a contract amendment with Craig Trueblood and K N L Gates for outside special counsel. Our presenter is the interim city attorney, also a soccer coach, for the record, Mr. Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me, Council President, Councilmembers. I am a little surprised on this one, so I'm going to play a little bit by ear. This is a 2018 contract that we have used repeatedly. One of our attorneys contacts them on facilities issues all the time, and so that's who we go to for legal advice, and therefore, we're asking to add money to that so we can keep using it. That is the one we're talking about.
This is the Wastewater Management Department?
Yes, yes, yes. So that is our request, that we add some more money to this. We use them consulting on occasion, and so we want to add some more money so that we can keep consulting with them. But as I stated, it originated in 2018. It's a pretty old contract. We just kind of add money to it when we need to consult with them. So that's our request.
Thank you.
And I thought this was on next week, so, surprise.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. Well done. Item four on the consent agenda, our number of multifamily housing property tax exemption conditional agreements, four through F. Our presenter is Terry Stripes.
Counsel, we updated the multifamily tax exemption ordinance in August, and this month and next month, we are bringing forward two records. We've hit record numbers with multifamily tax exemption. Currently, on your consent agenda, you have six M F T E projects that are all under the old rules. There are two in each of your council districts. So I have council sponsors of all of you. I have put in the entire packet, is a detailed PowerPoint presentation. My guess is, you don't want me to go through the entire PowerPoint presentation. So it is there. There are six projects. They are all conditional. Three of them are planning to finalize under the 12-year program. That is A B S, Malin, and Boone. And two of these projects are also projects of citywide significance, which is another incentive that you approved in August. And that is Boone and Malin. So between now and your actual, next week's meeting, please let me know if you have any questions, but I won't go through a presentation today.
Yeah, just a quick question. So B is for four units. I'm just curious, is that taking advantage of the Building Opportunities Act?
None of these are yet. You will see some of those next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stripes. Continuing on with the consent agenda, item five, report of the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligation, including those of Parks and Library, and Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards, item 5A. Item 5B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. And item six, city council meeting minutes, both 5A, B, and six will be completed for consideration during the Monday, September 26 city council meeting. Moving to special budget ordinances, the first ordinance up, forfeiture and contribution funds. Our presenter is Major McNabb. Along with...
We briefed this like major time, so I don't think we need to refit.
All right, I just didn't know if you had anything of interest you wanted to further brief always. You want the police chief to come on, say anything on this? Okay. That's a, no, they said no, they didn't at this time. Thank you. All right, moving along then, thank you, Council President, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund. Next ordinance, this action arises from the need to update training facilities and equipment. Again, I think we briefed on this one, too.
Yeah, I don't think we, but Councilmember Kinnear wants to talk about it. Go ahead.
Have that briefed on this?
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah. Oh, I wanted to say, prior to this, we were waiting for confirmation from our legislators
to give us an amount that they were willing to help fund an increased facility, and so we want to go ahead with this, knowing, and I talked with Representative Richelli, anything, any money that would be coming would be coming after the legislative session next year. So my preference is to go, I'm one of the sponsors, my preference is to go ahead and approve this, and then when money comes in from legislators, the legislation, we can add that and deal with that money when it comes in. And I know you like free money, Jackie, so.
Free money. I have a different point of view, but we'll talk about it next week.
Okay.
Because this money is for training, and we really want to up our training, and the legislature gave it to us for training, and so if they're going to fund the facility, then I'd love to spend the money on paying our people to get trained and paying for training.
We'll argue about it offline. That'd be great.
Yep.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Jackie. Nice to see you. All right, our next item, under special budget ordinance, this action arises from the need to increase staffing at the downtown precinct and a police I T. The presenter is Major Eric Olson.
Confused.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This is an SPO authorizing the hiring of a classified clerk two to be the front desk officer for the downtown precinct, as well as a business analyst two position that would work within the Taru, within the Spokane Police Department. And any questions?
So last time we were here, this was talking about the clerk for the downtown precinct, and there was discussion about working with cops and seeing if there was another avenue. Had there been any more conversations since then?
I believe we discussed it amongst ourselves, trying to reach out and see if they are willing to put staff down there, because they are welcome to join us at any point. But that would be, we would want that to be within, in supplement to their full-time position. Like at our police front desk, we have someone staffed there all the time, but we also have volunteers working with them. So if we could do that, that would be great, because it would give, offer, give us the capabilities to supplement the services given, but we definitely want to have someone there full-time.
Could you just describe what the clerk and the business analyst will be doing for the precinct?
Well, the clerk will be working for the precinct, and they're basically going to be the face for those coming in. There'll be, if someone rings the door buzzer, allow them in.
So they're the front desk person?
Front desk person.
Okay.
And so they'll be the person, you know, making that initial contact, seeing what services can be provided, what we need to do for that person, how we can run those services. The business analyst, well, they'll be doing a lot, but they work under Taru, which is our technical systems resource unit, so I had to go through that real quick. So they're going to be helping us as we stand up the new software that will replace our New World, that is our computer-aided dispatch, our mobile use, as well as our in-car and law enforcement records management system. So they'll be going through and mapping out the business processes for each document. Each process flow has to be mapped out to make sure that we're not missing any customers as we're going through and designing the new software and how it functions for the city.
And then there is a portion of that that we're going to get back, correct?
Because they are working on this project, which is a regional product, it is going to be reimbursed by the New World Consortium, which is made up of, I think, all law enforcement agencies within Spokane County minus one.
Okay.
So.
Major, what are the hours going to be, the clerk two person's going to staffing? Are they going to just eight to five, or is it going to be like, because I think a lot of people are hoping to have services after five.
Well, we haven't hired them yet, so I think it's going to be a matter of what we can see that needs to happen for the best service to be provided.
Okay, so that could be flexible.
I, it'll be what we establish and what we can do within union rules. I don't know that we want to say it's flexible, but I think the overall hours assigned to the person can, there's some room for that, yes.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Major. Our next special budget ordinance is an action to create a direct provision for code and parking, to allocate funds from various other funding sources. I'm not sure if this was briefed at Finance and Administration.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was.
That's what I thought. Very good. Then moving on to our next special budget ordinance, Continuum of Care Fund. This action arises to need the budget for the grant awarded to the city for the youth homeless demonstration program.
Okay, you skipped one, actually.
I did?
I think, maybe not. Nope, okay, great. That was just a long one. Okay, got it.
And our presenter is Jen Saracides. I thought she might be online.
Hi there, good afternoon. This is Jen Saracides, and I am here to present to you the Y H D P budget revision. This item previously had gone through council already to, for consent to distribute, to receive and distribute funds from HUD to two different agencies, Family Promise of Spokane and V O A. The only changes that we made was that there was some city admin that needed to be taken out of the total dollar amount, and in the transitional housing rapid rehousing bucket, we did some adjustments around leased units and rental assistance units, giving some of the leased units to Family Promise of Spokane. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Next item on the consent agenda, under resolutions and final reading ordinances, first two resolutions are approving the appointment of Tammy Palmquist as the Director of Development Services Center, and approving the appointment of Luis Garcia as the Director of Parking Services and Code Enforcement. And I believe Mr. McDonald briefed both of these during Finance and Administration, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we're good.
I do want to take a moment just to acknowledge the outstanding work of both Ms. Palmquist and Mr. Garcia. Their leadership, executive direction, and continued performance exceeding service expectations has risen the service level of both the Development Services Center and the Code Enforcement and Parking Services Division, and I want to compliment both of them here publicly and commend their outstanding leadership in both those divisions and departments, and congratulations on these appointments to both of you. Moving along then to approving of our next appointment, the Director of Contracts and Purchasing. Our gentleman up for appointment is Jason Nikoniki. I got that right. Thank you, Madam CFO. And here to present on that is our CFO, Tonya Wallace.
Thank you, City Council. This was briefed to committee last Monday. Jason Nikoniki lives here in Spokane, so he's coming local with many, many years of experience, and so we would certainly look for your confirmation of mayor's appointment of his position as Director of Purchasing and Contracts.
Thank you, Madam CFO. Next two resolutions, the first one is setting the assessment roll hearing before the City Council for the downtown parking and business improvement area, Business Improvement District. And the next resolution is setting the assessment roll hearing for the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area. And our presenter is Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This kicks off our annual process with the downtown Business Improvement District and the East Bragg Business Improvement District, where we go through the process of doing their annual assessment to collect the funds that service the bids and the services they provide to their ratepayers. So we go through you to do a resolution that sets their hearing in December, where you would approve their roles and also their management and budgets for the upcoming year. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Our next ordinance, vacating portions of Boy Scout Way and Gardner Avenue between Washington and Howard Street. Our presenter is Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, Council. We had the hearing on this vacation on the 22nd of August. These are the two pieces of roadway as part of the stadium project. It was approved subject to the conditions, so we're now just here before you for final reading next Monday of that vacation. They fulfill the conditions, and so we're ready for final reading. Be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next ordinance is relating to permitted use of forfeiture funds. Council President Biggs, I think this may have been already briefed.
Yep, and we're just, we put it off to do it at the same time as the other ones, so...
All right, very good, thank you. That leaves us then with our final item on the advanced briefing agenda. Oh, I think Councilmember Bingle had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I might have missed the other forfeiture one that happened earlier. The one about the forfeiture fund, I thought, reason why we had deferred it was because we had a larger discussion. Did we have that discussion? Did I just miss it when Samuel was talking or something?
We didn't have a discussion today, Councilmember. We are playing phone tag with someone to try to give us a presentation about what's effective in reducing drug crimes, so we're still doing that, but we didn't have a discussion today about it. We just noted that it's scheduled for next week. Yeah.
Gotcha. I mean, like I said, I'm just trying to figure what our process was in that, in that discussion piece, because I know that we received an email today from the chief with some thoughts, and so, I mean, do we want to have a discussion about that today as well as where, I mean, I don't want something to happen again because we haven't had time to have a discussion. So I know that this is a little out of order, I apologize, but can we have that discussion?
Well, the discussion that we were going to have had to do with a public health person. That was the one that we had planned to do. If I understood the letter, it was him giving us his legal opinion, which he's given us before, so I don't, you can comment on anything you want to, but I think we understand the issue.
I just know that some of us had had questions. Is the chief in the room? I can't see. Is he there? Would he like to get up and give us some thoughts?
Well, I don't know that that would be in order at this point, because that's not what we're doing on that, but we'll, we can schedule some time for that. We've got executive session, we have various things that we're up to, but we're not, I mean, we're not debating it right now. We're going to debate it next week, hopefully, but...
Okay, so just, I just want to make sure that, again, that we deferred it for having a conversation. I just make sure that this discussion and conversation has happened.
Yep. That, yeah, it was a, we were, we've had the discussion with police leadership on that and gotten their perspective, but what the request from councilmembers was to get a public health educator, a subject matter expert, which we have not finalized that yet. We're working on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. That brings us then to first reading ordinance, update the duties and responsibilities of the Spokane Human Rights Commission. Our presenter is Alex G. B. Lisco.
Good afternoon, Council and Administrator. This was discussed at the Urban Experience Meeting last week, and it's proposing to update the duties and responsibilities of the Spokane Human Rights Commission, and to add bullet point R, which reads, provide a guidance for the city's anti-discrimination efforts without limitation, including federal Title VI compliance efforts. And we collaborated with Jorell Haynes, and then also presented it to the Human Rights Commission, and they supported it.
Question? Council President, that concludes the advanced briefing for Monday, September 26.
Is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda as presented?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. And then, that brings us to tonight's agenda, and I'm just looking for, got, on the consent agenda, Minister, we've got highlighted the crew cabs and the police bicycle trailer. That's, doesn't, that's just deferred. So that's all that means. There's no...
That was deferred from September 12.
Okay. All right.
Did we want to make an adjustment to the...
Yeah, so, okay, so it looks like the only thing as far as agenda changes is a request to put an emergency ordinance on the agenda pursuant to the briefing at Finance, which would change the trigger point for Clean Air. It was originally proposed at 150. My understanding is councilmembers Zepone and Mr. Perkins have come up with 200, so it would be, first would be a motion to suspend the rules, then it would be a motion to add to the agenda, and then it would be a motion to amend to 200 instead of 150. And so first is a motion, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye, too? Okay. Councilmember Bingle, were you in aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay, all right, so the rules are suspended. Now is there a motion to add ordinance C 36281?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which, I guess which version, because you said 200 versus 150.
Well, this is just adding it, and then there would be an amendment to change it. Okay. All right, all those in favor of adding...
Sorry, sorry, quick discussion point here. Mr. Perkins, you and the administration are arguing with this number right here, the 200?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Bingle, we are in support of the index being at 200.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, six to zero. Now, you have an amendment.
Yeah, the amendment is amended from 250, or 200 to, 150 to 200.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious how we landed on 200 specifically. Is there any...
It's just the next level up on the AQI.
Well, the next level is actually 201. That's why I was asking 200.
Well, is it over 200, right? Is that what your language says?
I don't have to like the wording. Index to reach, it would say 200 or higher, so I guess...
Would you want to do 201, then?
201, sorry.
Okay, all right. So 201 friendly amendment, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's 201. All right, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye to the amendment to...
Aye.
Aye.
Over 200, okay.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's amended, that'll appear on our vote for this evening. Any other agenda? Oh, yes, I know, Councilmember Cathcart's going to have some.
But we're having exec session prior to...
First, okay, then we're going to come back. Great, thanks for that reminder. So, yeah, we are going to go into executive session to discuss litigation and potential litigation on several matters, and we do anticipate coming back and taking further action, or at least considering further action. In terms of how much time, let's 420, let's go to 420 unless we extend. So we'll see you back at 420, either to extend or to reconvene.
City Council is extending executive session for five minutes until 4:25. They do expect possible action when they return.
All right, we're in transit back from executive session and we'll be reconvening shortly. Annalee, are we on here? Okay, we're on. Okay.
Wait, we're not on yet.
Yeah.
The light's not on.
I know. There he is. All right. We took a transition break from executive session to come back, and now we still have some business to conduct, I believe, in regards to ordinance 36272. Councilmember Cathcart has some proposed amendments he would like us to consider.
Yeah, thank you. And these were submitted a week ago and then recirculated today. But so I'm actually going to propose three of the four based on our conversation, and we can go from there. So I'll make the motion on the first amendment, which reads, "Where camping prohibited and enforced at all times notwithstanding the availability of shelter space or beds, it is unlawful to camp or store personal property, including camp facilities and camp paraphernalia, or to have unauthorized encampments at any time at the following locations within 2,500 feet from any congregate shelter location." So that's the first amendment that would be...
Okay. And that's about a half a mile?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Bingle has seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart?
Add my two cents, and the reason why I just so strongly believe that this is something that we should update is I think anytime you have these congregate shelters, and we have a good neighbor agreement, although, you know, it's non-binding at this point, but we do have something that will be helpful, they do tend to attract quite a bit of issues, including camping. And so the intent is to try and avoid that, to keep those areas, the neighborhoods, the areas around these congregate shelters safe. But in particular, specifically, we just opened up a new shelter on Trent, and there is a neighborhood that is within this distance to the Trent shelter, and I just believe that we shouldn't leave them vulnerable to potential camping issues. There are some things in here that might be able to help, but I would feel more comfortable, and I believe that neighborhood would feel more comfortable if it was in code, that it is enforceable in that area there. So that's why I'm bringing this forward.
Yeah, but I can't hear anything.
Sorry, can we mute Kelly real quick?
All right. Councilmember Kinnear, you were leaning forward.
Yes, I was. Thank you. So I think the substantial harm clause covers all those things that you were talking about, and rather than further complicate and add to, I'd like to go back to that. We have a list of administrative policy instructing police how to go about enforcing the substantial harm. So I'd really like to consider that that is kind of the catch-all phrase, and we don't have to be going over and getting too nitpicky. I want to make sure this is defensible. I want to make sure, because if there's one part that isn't, the whole thing gets thrown out. So I'm erring on the side of caution here.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Thank you. So in this, do we not have a severability clause or anything like that, just like a lot of our other situations? So like if, in the instance that Councilmember Kinnear is talking about, you know, one piece of it is deemed to be illegal, we don't have something that says just that part is illegal, or is invalid, everything else stays up? We don't have anything like that?
I don't know if there's a... I'm not looking at the ordinance overall right now. And a severability clause can help, but it's not a guarantee. But we can look up the ordinance on the... while we're talking. But I don't have it up.
One other thing I wanted to say on this was, while I appreciate the substantial harm piece of this, I really do, I still just worry about any amount of subjectivity in this, considering how much police are already under the microscope, are already scrutinized pretty heavily. Taking away some of that subjectivity to make it more objective, I think, has real value, especially for the people that we're going to be asking to enforce this. And so for that reason, I intend to support this, and many other ways where we can be as clear, definitional as possible, just to remove some of that subjectivity.
Other comments? I'm just gonna note that many crimes have subjectivity to it, and that's what police do all the time. And they wait till they have probable cause that they can defend in court, and then prosecutor waits till they have beyond a reasonable doubt evidence that they can do. And so I don't think that's gonna hurt police, but we are gonna make sure that police, if they think someone is causing a substantial harm, or unreasonable risk of harm, a substantial danger, unreasonable risk of harm, they have to explain to everybody what that is, as opposed to just having a hunch about it. So I think our police are trained and will be trained, and are pretty effective by most judgments. And then I do just want to talk about the problem with the half-mile circle around every potential shelter that's out there. It just creates a lot of space out there that makes it a lot easier to strike down this ordinance that we've had in place for a few years. And so I'm concerned about that, and, you know, based on what I've heard from our lawyers on it, that's a concern. Every... It's like no one thing tips it over the edge, but as you add things together, it really can. And I'm just about to look for that severability clause, if it's there. I don't know.
Mary's saying it's there.
Oh, it is there. Okay. There is one. Thanks, Mary and Margaret. So yeah, Councilmember Bingle, there is a severability clause. But again, it's not a guarantor. Other commentary on this amendment to expand from three blocks to half a mile? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Two ayes. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. So five nays. All right. That motion to amend fails, but I think you have another one.
Yep. So the next amendment, so this is a slight tweak to the definition of camp. And so I will read the proposed change with how it's written now. So camp means to pitch, erect, or occupy camp facilities, or to use camp paraphernalia, or both. And then we'll be adding, "or to otherwise occupy public property such as sidewalks with one's belongings," and that's an end to the change, "for the purpose of, or in such a way as will facilitate outdoor sheltering for living accommodation purposes, or for remaining outdoors overnight, or using a camper, recreation vehicle, trailer, or other vehicle for living accommodation purposes, or for the purpose of remaining overnight." The intention here is really, in my mind, to fill the gap between sit and lie and camping. I believe that there are activities that we refer to as sit and lie, but it's actually really more akin to camping, and this is just trying to capture that gap without crossing over into defining camping as sitting and lying, which, as our legal department has said, would be a problem. So I just, I want to tweak that, just to fill in that gap. So that's the proposed amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Kinnear?
I'd rather open up, sit and lie again, get it right, or have our lawyers say, you know, let's look at it and redo the whole thing. It's so old. It's from 2013. Let's just stick to camping. Sit and lie is a different, I hate this term, kettle of fish, but it is. So let's keep the two separate so that we're not confusing the public, or ourselves, or our legal department.
Other commentary? I tend to agree that it potentially creates some confusion out there, and that is what defense attorneys use to try to get it struck down, or confuse juries. I think our attorneys came up with a good definition for it, so I understand the sentiment, but I'm opposed to it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I think two ayes. One was withdrawn. Okay. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
Take it, though.
Two to five. So that doesn't continue on. I think you have another one.
And yeah, this is the last one. And so this amendment says underneath and within, and so we strike out 50 and replace it with 300 feet of any viaduct, so a striking-out railroad located within, and we're adding the city of Spokane. So the idea here is, as written, this only affects railroad viaducts and those that are in the downtown precinct boundary. And so this amendment would say that we will enforce within 300 feet of those viaducts, but we will enforce under all viaducts for the enforcement provisions.
Okay. That's the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Bingle, second. Councilmember Kinnear?
So the downtown precinct boundaries are going to be redrawn. They're going to be including Brown Sedition, Peaceful Valley. So that's a wide area. And then I'll go back to the substantial harm piece, because, again, that's the catch-all. So if we have activity that is creating substantial harm for that person, for the public, for property, police can enforce. Again, we don't need to make it bigger, better. We can't. We already have it. That substantial harm piece will cover that.
And I'm just gonna add in, the 50 feet was what was suggested by City Legal as defensible. And again, this is, you know, this is that very rare situation where we're saying police don't have to define it as being substantial danger or public harm, because it's just so bad of a situation that you just don't have to do it. And all the feedback that I've gotten from people over the last few years has been those downtown viaducts, right in downtown, where they're kind of narrow, there's fast traffic going back and forth, people are blocking it, and you literally can't get from one side of downtown to the other without going through that. It's a very unique situation. And there are other viaducts, railroad or not viaducts, out there that, like anywhere else, it's unpleasant if there are people camp there. But if there are no shelter beds, and they have no place else to go, they're not doing anything harmful or dangerous, I think the Boise v. Martin decision says, no, you have to let them camp there until you open up your shelter bed. And the cure is to open up a shelter bed. And so I think it's a challenging situation because people are looking to get out of the weather if they have no place where they can stay. And so the viaducts are there. I intentionally didn't include the freeway overpasses, or other bridges, or other places where people could get out of the weather if there are no shelter beds. So I'm talking about the situation of no shelter beds. That's what this is. So I'm gonna oppose it, both so that the ordinance can be defended, and out of some humanity, if we're not going to provide shelter beds, there needs to be some places to get out of the weather, but not in those pinch points in the downtown.
Just to clarify, when I said substantial harm, I meant after 50 feet. So from 51 feet to 300 feet, if somebody is doing something that's causing substantial harm, it can be dealt with right then and there. So we don't have to worry about more...
And any other bridge?
Any other bridge, absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just say, I think this one's really important. We did get a letter from ESBA, I think yesterday, requesting that we would include the viaducts, bridges, et cetera, that are in the East Central neighborhood. They do have issues already with those. We're going to be enforcing more downtown, which will cause further... going to be enforcing more downtown, which will cause further issues in those areas. We're already going to site a courthouse there. We've got the Trent shelter not too far from there. It was just revealed that Washdod is making the camp permanent on that location. So there is a lot going on in East Central, and I think we need to make sure that we are enforcing these rules to protect that neighborhood. So I really do think this is really important.
And with the beauty of this ordinance is if it's causing a problem, that it can be enforced. It's just if it's not causing a problem, if someone's not causing a problem, they wouldn't be arrested. So that's, but I totally respect you.
So if somebody called, and there was a problem in East Central near a viaduct, then it would be, they could go and investigate it and remove people, right?
Yeah, under the different clause than this one, yeah. Under the substantial danger or unreasonable risk of public harm.
Okay.
Or if they're blocking the sidewalk, or I mean, there's, or they're causing damage. I mean, there's many ways.
Passpassing.
There's many ways that could be.
Pedestrian interference.
Yeah, so, all right. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's two. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. That's five. Any abstentions? None. All right, that amendment doesn't, but that's been on the record and heard. Any other business? Yes, Councilmember Bingle.
I would like to move to amend the ordinance with Councilman Cathcart's other amendment.
With what? What'd he say?
I think he said the other amendment.
Yeah.
With what?
The amendment two that I had circulated.
Okay.
Oh, the-
So the amendment of 1,000 feet of any licensed authorized child-centric facility?
Parks and yes.
Okay, so that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this one's really important as well. I know that we're talking about substantial harm, but when we're talking about, you know, the health of the city and the safety of the city, you know, I think, again, of my own, who doesn't feel comfortable going to parks, doesn't feel comfortable going to certain areas in the city, because there aren't camps that, you know, there was just the story that was done on the parks of the neighborhood, and I think it's really important that parks be reserved for recreation and not for camp, not for living. And so I think this amendment's really important, and I think it's an excellent approach.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I would just kind of reiterate, based on the feedback we got from City Legals, we make it very difficult to defend, and it would create so much space off limits that it would just violate Boise v. Martin. And again, what we're trying to do with this ordinance, we already have an ordinance that prohibits camping in all these places. We already have it. But under Boise, we have to show that we have available shelter space so that people are choosing to camp in those places, as opposed to having no other choice. And so this ordinance is, these amendments to the ordinance that we're bringing forward are to make the ordinance enforceable as best we can under Boise v. Martin, and this would undercut that. And again, I'm afraid that it would make it more challenging to enforce any part of the ordinance, but that's just me. The other, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I'll just say, I certainly understand what our legal department has said about the potential enforceability or lack thereof of this section, but I do think it's important just for us to think about, you know, we make a big deal about, you know, safe routes to schools, meaning like traffic and that you can safely walk there. But I think that there's also a point of being able to get there safely from other issues that might be happening. Camping could be one of those issues that might be an obstacle to children walking safely to school or other children-related activities. And so I support this because I think it's important that we're making sure that those areas in our neighborhoods are safe. I do hope that these other provisions, if this amendment isn't adopted, I do hope these other provisions will be enforceable in those areas to make sure that we do have those safe routes to schools.
Yeah, and again, if there's a substantial danger or unreasonable risk to public health or harm, the police can enforce it. They just have to explain that to everybody, so. All right, all those in favor of this amendment indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's two to five. All right, that brings us to the end of those amendments. Is there any other business before we adjourn briefing session? All right, hearing none, we'll adjourn. We'll see people back at 6:00 PM.